Called a meeting to order. Thank you, everybody for coming this evening. First off, we have the role. So Rachel.
Let me grab some mics. So when I call your name, please let me know if you're present. Mason? I know I see him online. I'll put him down.
Thank you.
Adrian?
Here.
Thank you. Jill? Reggie?
Yeah, she had problems with her mic. She was here. She's here.
I hear you. Okay. And then Catherine? And then Audrey's in person here. Kalapuni? Megan? And then Paula?
Yeah, I see Megan.
Megan's here. Okay, thank you. And then Paula's online too.
Yes.
Yep. Michael?
Hi, I'm here.
Thank you. And Patrick's in person here. And then Philip? And then Sylvia?
Yes.
Here.
Thank you. With that, we have nine members present.
Thank you. Okay, first up on the agenda, I do have our announcements. We've kind of gone through that a lot, but I would just like to clarify one point that I've sort of, I think, misquoted before, and that is, if a member of the public does raise a concern during public concerns, the board can weigh in. So that's, I won't say an exception, but that's how the Sunshine Rules kind of are supposed to work according to OIP. So first up on the agenda is our monthly report, and we have the, we're very, you know, very honored to have the Honolulu Fire Department, our branch, in our meeting space right now. So without ado, I will turn it over.
Okay, so good evening. My name is Dean Shumaka. I am stationed at New Wana Station. So let's get into it. So the statistics provided below represent the confirmed number of incidents in the neighborhood's geographical area for the previous month. For more details on the incidents and related map information, please visit the fire response map on our HFD website at fire.honolulu.gov under the News and Info tab. Should you have any questions, please feel free to email the HFD's Public Affairs and Media Liaison at hfdnhb@honolulu.gov. So for the incidents for January 2025, we had, for fires, we had one wildland brush fire, one nuisance, which is considered rubbish fires, not structure or vehicle, zero cooking fires, and six activated alarms. As for emergencies, we had forty-five medical calls, zero motor vehicle collision with pedestrians, one motor vehicle crash and collision, three mountain rescues, zero ocean rescues, hazmat, we had one incident. So this month is fire safety tip and announcement. For February is power outage preventiveness, or preparedness, sorry about that. Here are a few ways you and your family can provide for a power outage. Prepare with supplies, ensure your flashlights, radios, et cetera. Contain batteries that are charged. Don't forget to charge extra batteries. Make sure to prepare your family. Check in with family members. If anyone relies on medical devices that require power, ensure to plan ahead of time. Prepare food and water. Set your fridge and freezers to the coldest settings. Keep them closed as much as possible during the outage. Fill up water containers for drinking and other needs. Protect your electronics. So unplug unnecessary electronics to prevent damage from power surges. Never touch down power lines. Assume lines are energized and dangerous. So for more safety tips, visit honolulu.gov/dm. Learn more about power outage at wineelectric.com/stormcenter. So that's all I got. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the public? For the fire department? You know, unfortunately, we just had, late last year, we had a report, an opinion from the Office of Informational Practices, which governs the Sunshine Law, and it stated that our board members were not allowed to initiate discussion on any topics that weren't specifically on our agendas. Unfortunately, our board members can't ask questions, just so you know.
Oh, okay.
But, well, no, 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 it's not, believe me, we're working through this, so it's not your fault. But we we certainly, without any questions from the public, we certainly appreciate your attendance this evening. And yeah, thank you very much for coming out.
Yeah, well, everybody have a safe night.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So next up, we have Honolulu Police Department, and we have, do we have a rep from District One? See, it's Lieutenant Segusio. Is he with us this evening? Maybe he'll join us after. We can always circle back. So we will take, if I see an officer, I assume you're from District Five, sir?
Yes.
If you want to go ahead, please.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. This is Lieutenant Creighton Alteko with District Five. I'm one of the nighttime commanders here at the Kali Station. Let me give you guys the stats first for the month of January. There were no aggravated assaults. There was one auto theft. There were four reported burglaries, no robberies, no sex assaults, no simple assaults, twelve basic thefts, and six thefts from vehicles. Total calls for service were nine hundred and forty, which is up from December, which had eight hundred seventy-nine calls for service. Just as a note, the burglaries, I believe only one was a residential burglar, and it was at, in the one hundred block of Salt Kuakini Street. I'm sorry, I wasn't able to get the specifics of that and what the outcome was. But the rest were commercial burglaries in the four hundred block. There was two occurred in the four hundred block of North School Street. I think of particular interest based on community concerns and brought up by you guys' representatives. We did a number of traffic enforcement operations along the Poli and New Wano Highway area. As of, we began on the ninth of February, and we had five specific traffic enforcement operations that were conducted over six-hour periods. There were a hundred forty-one citations for speeding. There were six citations for excessive speeding. Excessive speeding can result in arrest, and it's a very high fine. There was one citation issued for driving without a license, and there was also one citation for no insurance. Out of the one hundred and forty-seven speeding citations, a hundred twenty-three of the drivers, or eighty-four percent, lived outside of the Poli New Wano area. So primarily windward residents returning home or coming home from work, that sort of thing. We know you guys were very concerned about it, so we took it seriously. We're still having officers conduct operations up there as time allows and as they, as we're able to get the operations organized. But we gave you guys some hard numbers that you guys can report to DOT, you know, for you guys to, so you guys can bring it up and maybe get some other types of traffic calming measures installed up there to try to get the people to slow down. But yeah. So at that, I'll leave it up to any other community concerns.
Thank you. Do we have any members of the public that would like to ask a question or voice a concern?
Stop eating those. You're gonna blow up. No, I'm not. The number's on the scale.
Yeah, I assume that was a little extra conversation. Are there any members of the public that would like to ask a question or voice a concern? Hearing none, thank you, Lieutenant. Thank you very much. Thank you especially for reporting the stats about the Poli Highway. So we appreciate that.
We'll try and get that to you guys in a hard copy as well, so that you guys can have it available for you guys trying to work for other things in the neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. That would be very appreciated.
Okay. You guys have a good night.
You too. Thank you. Did we get anyone from District One that came in? Okay, hearing that, then we'll move on to our Neighborhood Security Watch, which is Paula. You muted, Paula.
Sorry. Thank you, Officer, for helping us to get rid of some of the speeding that's going on. We've had, within the last three days, we've had a big duck killed on Upper Dalseth speeding. Hit the duck and left it horrible and hit and run, and nobody to clean it up. We had another one today. A mother duck was killed in Alika. And that is a school zone. To remind District Five, this is a school zone. So we lost a mother duck, and the babies were all left in the stream. And we had, and I didn't, but our boss, Matt Tanay, daughter went and saved three, four, five ducks. And those all ducks are ones that are being lost to the world because they're very, very, very sacred. As far as Hawaii is concerned, if there's no more ducks here, they're called the Koloa. And then some people are saying they're Koloa Maori, which are mixed with mallards. But still, the speeding goes on, and they don't stop, and they don't help clean up. The neighbors are very upset about this. We also had pigs in the upper New Wano area on Pelikani, so I did notify HPD that at night, you need to, you need to be very much aware of a mother pig and four babies crossing the street on Pelikani from the stream and going back up into the mountain. We have no suspicious activity except for what District Five knows about us. They know more than we know. We don't get a three-seven, three-seven-two, three-seven-one, three-seven-two, or three-seven-three reports separately like we used to do. But that would be really interesting to know, because I think our Neighborhood Board, Neighborhood Security Watch, is doing a really good job watching out for District Five. Oh, thank you for your thumb. I needed that. I want to give you this, this, and this means love. Back to District Five, because people don't know that one means I, and the other means we love you, okay? That's what it means in international whatever. International signing. The exact location of the last burglary at a temple was not known. We have several temples in our area, and it would be really interesting to know what temple it was that was broken into. We really need to do that. Speeding, I repeat, peat, 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 peat it. And I understand from your meeting on the twenty-eighth that you are helping to solve some of this stuff that's going on up here, even with the wheelie-deeleys, closest to Waikanaka, and hitting that last light to go over the mountain, going into Waianalo. And I still ask if District One, District Two, District Five, Waianalo can get together and make a plan, like I told Officer Segusia at one time, to maybe put a trap for the three. Because I know Segusia does up to Wiley, and then you folks do after Wiley for District Five into Waianalo. And then, oh, it's out of our territory, so we can't do that. So then I always say, check your neighborhood plan for the five-year plan for the by police department. Because if we have a big thing on the Poli Highway, people cannot get home, and I'd be very glad to show District Five all the places you can get through to get parents back to school and get them back over the mountain by going through the neighborhood. And I wish that somebody would listen to me on District Five on the police five-year plan. We had two calls in the use of poisons along the stream who, this last week and today, where a person is saying, we're poisoning a yard, and you can't walk on our sidewalk. So I think that needs to be stopped, even along the stream, because we're getting coy dying. And not only the ducks will be affected, which will be dead soon if we don't. There's only two places. Well, the two islands in Hawaii for the brown Hawaiian duck that are mixing with the mallards, but these guys are real that ones today with the mother duck dying. So somebody needs to look at that, because the speeding is in a school zone. Also, thanks to Reggie for doing a really good job at our last meeting. I want to appreciate her. And she really is worried about Sunshine Law, as I am, because I want it all discussed at one time. I did call Sunshine Law, because when it comes to the police and fire department, we need to know right away. We don't need to wait till the next meeting to find out if you folks in District Five want us to do something for you, because we have Neighborhood Security Watch here. And we do have a dispatch, which we dispatch to the neighborhood. And I thank you, Officer, for being at the meeting. Thank you so much. You want to call me? You can. You might have my number and might not, but I'm at five oh. Anyone wants to park in my parking lot, which is not my parking lot, but my driveway, to do their reports, you're more than welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members from the public that wish to ask a question or express a concern about our Neighborhood Security Watch?
Join. Just join, come in.
I'm sorry, what is she saying?
Join.
Okay. If, hearing none, Paula, thank you very much. You guys do great work, so I appreciate it. Next up on our agenda is the Board of Water Supply, and we have Jimmy here that will give his report.
He's in Kansas. Okay.
But however you must.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jimmy Anos, and I'll be representing the Board of Water Supply tonight concerning the Uiva Water System Improvements Project. Unfortunately, we do not have any updates at this time. There isn't any change in status, and project isn't ready to start yet, and unfortunately, we don't have a target start date yet, but as we get more updates, we'll update the board. And concerning the actually repatching issues in the area. All right, there is an update from Kathleen. We do have an update from Kathleen from our communication section, and she is working to get more information from city, from CFM, and also more information from our construction section. But we'll be sure to keep following up with them to get more updates on the patching issue. So now for the monthly report. I do not have any main breaks to report last month. So I'll move on to the general water announcements. I'm going to be talking about the water waste hotline. If you see water being wasted, such as a broken pipe, a malfunctioning sprinkler, a running faucet, excessive watering, or something similar, please let us know, so we can follow up and stop the unnecessary water loss. To report water waste, you can visit our website at www boardofwatersupply.com/waterwaste. You can email us at contactus@hbws.org. Or call us at eight oh eight seven four eight five zero four one. Let's make every drop count and do our part to conserve our precious and limited water supply. Water is life. So that's the end of my report, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the member, from members of the public? Hearing none, Jimmy, thank you very much for your report. We appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you for coming out this evening, too. Okay, so next, on our agenda, we have the filling of vacancies. There are two vacancies in Subdistrict One, which is generally the area around Punch Bowl. If you are interested in serving on the board, our eligibility is pretty limited, or pretty, I'm sorry, pretty expansive if you're over eighteen or older. And if you live around Punch Bowl, we can find out after if you actually live in the district. So are there any, are there any attendees that are interested in joining our board as a board member from that Punch Bowl district? All right, that was a tongue twister. I don't know why tonight. Thank you. Hearing none, we can move on. Thank you very much. Next up, we have our report from our non-board events, and first on our agenda is Reggie with reports on Oahu MPO.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Sorry.
Yes, you sound a little muffled, but you're fine.
Oh, okay, great. I'll try to speak.
But it works. It works. Go ahead.
Oh, I just have a couple of things from the Oahu MPO monthly meeting that I attend. I'm gonna look at my notes here. The Oahu Work Plan, which is a document for twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-seven, because it's a new year for them. It's open for public review, so if everyone wants to go onto the Oahu MPO website and view the plan, and I was going to show you a few pages tonight, but sorry, I'm having some technical difficulties. I did ask the chair, and he did so, upload a couple of pages of the work plan that you can take a look at on the Google Drive. And so if you don't want to go to the website, you can go onto the Google Drive and look at the list of projects. These are planning projects. And they're mostly studies, and there's nothing directly affecting us. The document is specifically for the federal government to show the federal government and the local county that eighty percent is federally funded. Each project is federally funded eighty percent with federal funds and twenty percent with a local match. These studies, the only study that affects the Neighborhood Board that I could find is the Complete Streets project. There's four hundred thousand dollars allocated this year, and also four hundred thousand dollars allocated for safe routes to schools. These are probably engineering studies that are going to determine for safe streets, what areas are, you know, have speeding. And then they use the money to hire planning consultants and architects to draft plans, and then have it reviewed by the Neighborhood Board, et cetera, et cetera. So please, that document needs to be reviewed by February twenty-four, which is Monday. There's one more document. I'll try to make my report short. The Statewide Transportation Improvement Program document, which is administered by the Department of Transportation, does have, it's also up for public review. It's due on the twenty-fifth of February, which is next week as well. It lists three years. It's a short-term, three-year planning document that lists all the projects for the entire island and the ones that affect the Neighborhood Board. Possibly, there's fifteen million allocated for data collection for the Oahu MPO staff to collect data to prove, you know, to prove that their studies and their design, plans, and projects help mitigate speeding and transportation issues. The stip is for your fiscal year twenty-five to twenty-eight. It's three years. It has a whole bunch of projects that I thought I listed, but I don't see them over here, or here. It has federal highway funding, and some of the projects include highway safety, like lights and repairs, traffic light improvements, and intelligent transportation systems, which are cameras on the highway. There's nine million allocated for the Bike Way Improvement Project, electric vehicle facilities on statewide transportation facilities. There's bike and pedestrian facilities and ADA compliance at various locations. Fourteen million for that. But unfortunately, in the line item, it says that that's to buy buses for ADA compliance. There's also safe routes to schools that six, six point four five million allocated, as well as the bike pedestrian plan update, one million's allocated for that. FKA funding, there's enhanced mobility for seniors and individuals with disabilities. This is for non-urban areas, and you would think it's projects like improving the sidewalks of Poli Highway, but no, this is to buy vans. So handy vans, I presume. So it's thirteen million allocated for that. Just a couple more projects. There's sign destination upgrades, which is like if, like the Poli lookout signs or state directional signs on the highway. So that one does say there's going to be some of the money allocated to Poli Highway, but I don't know which signs are going to be upgraded. There's some resurfacing. OS number sixty-two is on Poli Highway. Lighting improvement, resurfacing on Vineyard Boulevard to Kamiaia Highway. Phase two, there's also Vineyard Boulevard to Waikanaka. It's a hundred nineteen million allocated for those projects. It's not just those projects, but it's a whole bunch of streets and areas listed on the document. And lastly, Bike Way Improvement on King Street, seven million allocated for that. And there's also traffic signal, traffic signals money for upgrades on Vineyard Boulevard and all the street intersection, which is right outside of our district, and Aliha Street and School Street. That's phase five. So if you want more details of what's coming up in the future, no guarantees that these projects are going to be funded in the outer years, but it'll constantly be listed on this document, and it constantly gets reviewed and approved. So now's your chance to provide your comments. Go on to, or Google Oahu MPO, Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization, and feel free to provide your comments. They definitely do listen, you know, and take your comments into consideration. But that concludes my report, and I'm sorry it took so long. Mahalo.
No, that was great. Thank you very much. Are there any questions or concerns or comments from the public? Ray, thank you very much for your informative report. It was very good, as always. Thank you. We appreciate it. Next up, we have our Papakalea Community Report from Adrian. I think Adrian's here, right? Yeah, Adrian, do you want to give that report?
I am here. Oh, Papakalea. Our Papakalea Ohana Health Fair is March eighth at Lincoln School from ten to two. Couple of weeks ago, we had a kickoff event for Palina Pua Waina, an event at Koala introducing to community our project that will be looking at planning a Kopuna Supportive Living Center for land designated for Pua Waina. I think that's kind of it, Megan. Yeah? Yeah. So we will begin community conversations on the project next month.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the public for, regarding the Papakalea Community? Hearing none, thank you very much, Adrian. Thank you, Megan, for chiming in, too. Thank you. So next up, we have our Residents and Community Concerns. Is there a member of the public, we have three minutes allotted for those, that wish to express a community concern at this time? Please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, we can move on. Thank you very much. Next, we have our elected representative. Our elected representative. So first up, we have the Mayor's Representative, which is Director Kemashiro. Who's Director Ashiro with us.
Hi, good evening. I'm here.
Good evening.
So wanted to share, and I will put a link into the chat for the Mayor's Newsletter. Some highlights, hundreds attended a memorial service in Kakaako to honor Jeff Fiala, the Honolulu firefighter, killed in the line of duty. Mayor Blangiardi and members were also sworn into office, beginning a new four-year term. A new ninety-unit Bill Seven Affordable Housing Development broke ground in Makiki. And repairs began on the seawall and walkway at Queen Surf in Waikiki, near the Barefoot Beach Cafe. Lastly, the city unveils a new Opala truck for Leeward Oahu Parks and Beach Parks. One other item to highlight is that the twenty twenty-five Neighborhood Board elections are now opened, as mentioned earlier. And I will be inserting a link to the Neighborhood Board website with important dates and information. There were no departmental follow-up issues from last month's meeting, and that completes my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the public for Director Ashiro? Seeing none, just raise your hand or yell out if I miss you. Seeing none, thank you very much, Director. We appreciate your report. Next up, we, thank you. Next up, we have Councilmember Tyler, just up his hands. We have a representative from his office.
Hi, this is Lisa.
Lisa, please go ahead. Yes, thank you.
Hi. Hi, Chair.
Hi. Hi, Chair, Board, and other members. Happy New Year, because I actually haven't been on since last year. I was a little sick last month. I just have some really short information. So there are new council committee assignments in 2025. And as we enter the new year, Councilmember Dos Santos Tam has been assigned to the following council committees. He is Chair of the Budget Committee with newly elected Councilmember Nishimoto as Vice Chair. He is Vice Chair of the Zoning Committee, serving alongside Chair Councilmember Kia Aina. And additionally, he will be a voting member of the following would be Planning, Infrastructure and Transportation, Housing Sustainability, Economy and Health, International and Legal Affairs, and Executive Management. There's been a bunch of changes to the names of the committees for some of them. So if you need to, you can keep track of the city council legislation and other information at hnldoc, sorry, hnldoc.ehawaiegov. There was a concern regarding game rooms on New Uwenu Avenue. So last month, council member was notified by neighbors of a suspected game room on New Uwenu Avenue. And by working with HPD, the suspected game room operator was quickly removed. And as many in the community know, these establishments are not just about gambling. They attract criminal activity, including drug trafficking, prostitution, and illegal firearms. So recognizing this impact on our neighborhoods, council member is committed to finding meaningful solutions to help stop the spread of illegal game rooms. He is working closely with fellow council members who face similar challenges in their districts to introduce common sense, effective legislative focused on tackling this issue. If you suspect an illegal game room in your area, please report to Honolulu hpd.org or call 7233933. And then just the final update, I believe somebody might have talked about it in the last meeting. I was reading through the minutes, but it's a response from DTS. They said to please inform your constituents that our investigation into the feasibility of installing speed bumps on Tantlas Drive has been completed. They apologize for the belated response. They have determined that installing speed bumps near the Papakalea Community Park would effectively help reduce speed in the area. So they will schedule the installation of the speed bumps subject to the availability of funds or seek assistance from the State of Hawaii Department of Transportation. So I do believe I'll be coming back with more information on that, and that completes my report.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the community or council members Tyler DeSoto's Tom's represented? Hearing none, thank you. Lisa, I would point out that we do have something that I think that would be of interest to the council member on our agenda regarding the sale of marijuana products that I hope you have an opportunity to stay around for.
I'll stay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next up, we have the Governor, Governor Green's representative. Did I see Will?
Yes, hi, Chair and Board. William New, representative to the New Uwenu Board. Just want to highlight that on to the chat, the governor's and a press release from the state of state last month, as you may have heard last week. 21st, that's the last day of your, the most recent board meeting was the governor's state of state 25 state. He wanted to highlight which include affordability in this.
William, William, excuse me, but you're actually kind of breaking up your audio. Maybe if you just turn your video off, which would be okay. I mean, because your audio is breaking up a little bit, so. If that would help.
Actually, one second. I'll check what my headphones in. It helps.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no worries. Okay. Yeah, it was just, it was coming in and out. Okay, so now, now we've lost you all together. Oh, okay. There you go.
Okay. Hopefully, on this, I'll try to keep my camera on for a little bit, but chime in if it's so.
So far, so good.
But just reiterating, the governor's state of state was 2025 state was held last week or last month on January 21st. Some of the highlights initiatives he wanted note are affordability for state of Hawaii, which also enacting the largest income tax credit cut for Hawaii's history, which provides 5.6 billion in relief over seven years. There's also affordable housing, which accelerated development of 7,000 affordable housing units across the state through emergency proclamations. And they're also on track to deliver 62,000 units in development over the next decade, which includes 46,000 designated as affordable housing. On homelessness, the governor has, is expanding the Kaohai or the tiny home projects villages to 17 statewide as of today, and with 30 planned by 2026. There are also. And today, the governor signed a executive order implementing Operation Higher Hawaii, a targeted outreach initiative featuring expedited state hiring processes, which in short would allow individuals to directly be hired into the state, especially with those who may be transitioning from federal government and otherwise. But this allows direct hires or a kind of, as I understand, it's a resume bank. You submit it to the resume pool. You, you kind of bypass the civil service process a little more. The resumes go straight to the hiring agencies versus some of the, the more delays or the review process that may be in place for civil service and otherwise. But this was signed in, enacted today. This is Operation High Hawaii. The website is deheard.hawaii.gov/HHI. I'll put in, I'll put this press release into the chat as well for more information. And lastly, just as it's your neighboring district, I want, they want to highlight in the governor's newsletter that the Colawalu Dog Park opened. This is the one that's on Queen Street across or behind TJ Maxx or South Shore Marketplace at Ward. So that one's just opened last week, I believe, on February 7th. So that's a brand new dog park that's opened up. If anyone has children or, you know, grandparents or have children or take kids around, the, the park across the street just also reopened about three months ago, which has a new updated range of, I guess, playground equipment, which are sensory oriented. I took my kids there, my kid there, the basketball that is great. It's very robust. There's a lot of kids playing with a lot of families there. It's pretty cool. But that's a new back-to-back combo of the dog park and the new kid park at Ward. But that's generally the overall of my, of the this month's report. Thank you.
Thank you. We, we did have a tad bit of question, I think, at the beginning. So are there any board members who just want to clarify anything they may have missed? I think that's completely appropriate. I, I think we got all, we got most of it, but there was a little bit of breakup at the very beginning. Okay, hearing, hearing none. Are there any questions or comments from the general public or from the public regarding the governor's representatives' report? Seeing none, thank you very much, William. We appreciate you giving your report this evening. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up, we have is Senator Rhodes, and he sent a representative, Peyton, okay, go ahead, please.
Hello, I'm Peyton. I am a legislative aide for Senator Rhodes's office this session. As his report states, a new updated 2024, 2025 COVID vaccine has been approved for use. COVID shots are now similar to flu shots in that they target the most prevalent strain of COVID. This vaccine is not meant to prevent symptoms of every COVID variant, rather the aim is to protect against severe illness, hospitalization, and death. $1,750,000 in capital improvement project funds were released to New Uwenu Elementary School for designing and construction of restrooms and buildings L, M, and N. I met with Oahu Invasive Species Committee, providing me with the following highlights. There are two positive samples of rapid Okeha death, with one of them receiving treatment. One of the areas is near the top of Pa'oa Flats Trail, and the other is on New Uwenu Trail. Myconia is nicknamed the green cancer of the Pacific. It is listed as a noxious weed by the Hawaii DOA and is one of the top threats to Hawaii's watersheds and forest ecosystems. Myconia is currently pervasive throughout the forest and is presently being treated. There are two active sites of little firehans that were detected near the Oahu Country Club back in May and June 2024. And several surveys were conducted for presence of coqui frogs, but no more detected. Senator Rhodes introduced Senate Bill SB 405 relating to neighborhood board meetings with the intent of SB 405 allowing neighborhood boards to receive and discuss information from third-party reports by a government official not included in the publicly noticed agenda, provided that decisions on matters raised by third-party reports shall be made at later meetings preceded by public agenda giving notice of the decision-making. The Judiciary Committee has scheduled SB 405 for public decision-making on Thursday, February 20th, 2025, at 10:01 a.m. in Room 16 at the State Capitol. It's decision-making only, so no oral testimonies will be accepted. Persons wishing to submit written testimony may do so up to 24 hours prior to the hearing through the legislative website. That's www.capital.hawaii.gov backslash account. Please don't hesitate to call our office at 808-586-6130. With questions or concerns, please feel free to email at sendroads@capitol.hawaii.gov.
Thank you. Are there any questions or concerns from the public or Senator Rhodes's representative? Hearing none. Peyton, I hope you can stick around for just a few minutes. We'll have a really short, probably discussion of sunshine law related issues, and it would be nice to report those back to the Senator. Okay?
I can do that.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your report. Next up, we have Representative Jenna Takano. Sorry, go ahead, Jenna, please.
Sorry, I'm still at the office giving directions. Sorry about that. Take a quick update. Sorry, where's my word? Sorry, sorry. Okay, I just wanted to thank everybody who came out to the town hall meeting on speeding I had at the end of January. If you weren't there, we will be sharing a lot of the updates as we get, you know, action items back from the departments. There was a lot of discussion on Poli Highway in particular, both about the speeding, the noise, just pedestrian safety. A lot of those issues I know this board has taken up in the past. So, you know, I, I was really happy. I was really appreciative that the departments came out and got to hear directly from community. I think they really heard the concern and frustration. We're already seeing little projects come up a little outside your guys' area, but Wiley Street and the Leha Street intersection was a big concern, and they got out there and re-stripped that for us. So, you know, I think, um, thanks to everyone coming out and really sharing with HPD and I saw the officer earlier was giving the stats of some of the enforcement they're doing, but DOT and DTS also really kind of heard what was going on and is starting to make some of these changes. So thank you to community for coming out. I think that was a really important part, because again, you know, when I'm just like sending them like letter and letter and letter, it's one thing, but to hear from people, I think, really made a big difference. So thank you to everyone. And for my email list, you know, I probably will be sharing a lot of these updates either in small mailers, maybe in my next newsletter or in the email list. So you'll get some of those updates as well. I just wanted to give two quick updates on community bills I introduced this year. The first one is actually Paula's skateboard helmet bills for my 16-year-olds and under to wear helmets. So Senator Rose's office was nice enough to do that drafting and gave me the House Companion, the House bill passed through the Transportation Committee and is actually being heard in our Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs Committee this Thursday at 2:00 p.m. It's House Bill 706. If anybody is interested in submitting testimony, I'll put the link in the chat for everyone to, if you're interested in supporting that. The second bill is a bill I introduced about funding to help DLNR remove hazardous trees that are abutting people's residential property. This is an issue that got flagged for me by some neighbors in New Uwenu who lived, you know, up against the forest, some DLNR forest land. And we're having a hard time, you know, getting a tree removed. Actually, one of the trees they were concerned about actually fell kind of into the yard. Luckily, didn't hurt anybody, didn't hit property. But when I was talking to DLNR, this seemed to be kind of an area where they said they could definitely use some dedicated funding. So that's House Bill 1278. It passed, it's probably going to be heard in the Finance Committee. I'm the Vice Chair of the Committee. I asked the Chair to hear this bill for community. And I can share updates when it gets scheduled, if you're interested in submitting testimony for that. But this was kind of a gap funding area. They were saying specifically to help residents who live next to state lands, so trying to get some funding for that initiative. And then a couple other just quick updates that came from some of our departments. The judiciary is doing its annual call to look for court interpreters. If you or anyone you know, you know, is fluent in another language, the courts definitely need help for people coming through the system who need access to interpreters. There's a short certificate program and an orientation, and it costs $25 to attend to become kind of certified with the courts. If you are accepted and go through everything, it's a compensation rate of $35 for an hour. And, you know, it really also provides this really necessary service, you know, because in Hawaii, we have many of our residents who speak, who English may not be their first language. If you know anyone who's able and willing to help out with this service, I'll put the flyer link in the chat and feel free to pass it on to anyone you know who might be interested. And I think that's kind of the last of, I've been working on if there's any, I guess, questions from community or please know, board members, please feel free to reach out, email my office, or call anytime if there's anything I can work on in between meetings.
Thank, thank you. Do we have any questions or concerns from the public for the representative? Seeing none, thank you very much, Jenna. We appreciate your time and all your efforts. Great job.
Thanks, everyone.
So next up, we do have, do we have any representatives from federal elected officials or any elected officials that I may have missed? Seeing none, we're ready to move on to our board business. First up on the agenda is just a review of the sunshine law issues. Sylvia, did you have something?
Well, yeah, you, you know, under other elected officials, are the Neighborhood Board people allowed to speak because we are other elected officers? Officials, we got to run for an election and we're considered elected officials.
The, the city does not consider us elected officials, board members, sorry. And, and that was, you know, we don't submit financial reports, anything like that. We're not considered public officials. I know it's kind of crazy how it's, you know,
But officially, officially, we are, and we are also considered lobbyists also. Did you know that?
I don't believe that's correct. I haven't seen that. You, you've served on the commission along with myself.
I don't know when the rules changed, Patrick, but I was told that when I did testimony on bills that, you know, we had to declare that we were on the name, elected members of the Neighborhood Board, and also we were considered lobbyists.
You know, in my, my tenure on the commission.
I don't know where you got your opinion from, but that's been the opinion when for years, when I've served on the board and court counsel and did not any of the executive secretary never contested that. So I don't know where that interpretation is coming from, that you're, that you are saying we are not elected officials, even though we don't get paid. And, um, but could you get that clarified?
Yes, I, I'll bring that up, but, but we have, well, I'll bring that up to our executive secretary of the NCO and get his input. So yes, I'll take that up with him. Thank you. So now I can report back to you at our next meeting. Okay, so moving on, we have the fun subject of the sunshine law again. As Senator Rhodes Legislative Assistant, I believe it was, reported, there is a bill SB 405. If you go to the state's website, the Capitol's, the legislature's website, you can put that in and kind of give it, give an indication of where it is. I have to say, in my, my opinion, my, just my opinion. Um, I have to say, in my, my opinion, my, just my opinion, it, it's actually a little um short of what would be desirable. Because but it does allow for discussion when, when third party presenters are giving their report. So would give us somewhat of a brief, um, I'm actually working with uh some other folks and Rachel was kind enough to send me some information of, of how we can uh put some stuff on our agenda to sort of open up the ability of our members to discuss kind of important issues that come up from like our police department or, or other reporters. So it's kind of a work in progress. I don't know how the legislative fix will go. Like I said, I, I, I think it's a little um short of what is necessary. I expressed my desire to uh Senator Rhodes in November or December, I can't recall which, and I, I, I just, I really feel like uh his effort in making this was a little um underwhelming and that's just my opinion. Anyway, I don't know if anyone wants to express any thoughts, but you know, this is kind of an ongoing issue. We'll see how things shake out. Ray, Ray.
Um, I was just wondering, I noticed that the sunshine law says that if we define our agenda better, like if you like say you got a copy of HP's report and they wanted to talk about the violations that they did recently and that a lot of them were from out of the neighborhood and stuff like that, then you could write that in the agenda, be a little bit more descriptive and it'll give us more leeway in discussions. Um, do you think you'd ever like want to try that or?
Yeah, and that, that's one of uh, one of the things that we're definitely gonna do. Uh, so I, I didn't do it for this month, but uh hopefully next month we'll have things lifted, listed out, like assaults batteries. Um, I forgot what they called the, the entries into vehicles, but uh things like that. Yeah, it, it's almost like a loophole in the system. So we'll try that and, and see if we can capture everything. That, that's actually one, I think the best solution to this until maybe OIP comes and says you're violating the spirit of the law, but we'll take that as it comes. Thank you.
Great.
So Sylvia, did you have something that you want to add?
So, yeah, I have a copy of Senate Bill four oh five and where the changes are to be made. So is it legal for us? Because this is on the agenda. So it's legal for us tonight to discuss it?
Yes. You could take action on it.
I just wanted to make it be very clear as to how, you know, your interpretation of it is. And so in other words, what I just heard you saying what your opinion was, you're not exactly in support of four oh five, correct?
That is correct, although the alternative is to do nothing, and I'm not in support of that either. So it, it, it's, I do, I think it is a very um limited uh solution. And in, in a, I won't say ineffective, it, it is a solution to part of the problem. And I, I wish the Senator had done more, is what I would say.
And you, and you discussed it with him that you wanted more than what is in it right now?
Uh, yes.
You did discuss
I mean, we had a very productive conversation. I don't want to, you know, throw Senator Rhodes under the bus. He was very kind and, and we had a very uh good discussion on it. And, and I understand there's a lot of pushback against uh opening, you know, oh, what I would call flexibility and allowing discussion. So there is a lot of pushback, and so I understand, and I, I, I don't want to sound like I'm criticizing Senator Rhodes. I think, you know, he, he, he tries to do what's best in, in most situations, but I personally am just a little disappointed. I, I the commission itself unanimously passed a resolution um asking that there'd be more expansive discussion. You know, it, it wasn't just limited to third party reports, because one of the issues is we have, we have members of the board making reports. Are those considered, considered third party in those cases? Well, I'm not sure. You know, is it ambiguous? To me it is. Uh, in other words, when, when uh Ray uh gives her um a Wahoo MPO report, can we ask questions then? I don't know, you know, and, and the way the legislation is written, I would probably say no. And it doesn't look like OIP, you know, OIP, every time they make an interpretation, they make it on the, the side of uh restricting, and I won't say restricting speeds. That's a little bad, but I mean, just very restrictive in terms of, I, I guess, I, I guess their view would say they make their calls based uh on public notice would be the preferred balance.
The only thing, this is my opinion. I think with that opinion that came from OIP, it's, it muzzles the board members from actually doing our jobs in the community. Because aren't we supposed to help our neighbors in our community and address their concerns when they bring it to us? And if we can't ask the questions of any of the city officials or anybody who's giving any of these reports, um, what good is it? I mean, what are, are we doing our job as a neighborhood board member? Because we can't ask questions on their behalf.
I totally agree.
That's what I'm concerned with. And I think that in a way, even if this doesn't go as far as we wanted it to go, if it gets passed this year, at least we got something and we can work on improving the sunshine law to benefit us because there's no time for us to fix it and get it passed this year, then we go on another year being muzzled. That's the way I look at this.
Yeah, I think the concern is that, to me, this is a little too little, but does it help? Yes, it does. But I think once this fix, this fix is hypothetically, if it gets passed into law, then there will never, I, I don't think there will be any appetite to go the extra step, say, fix it any, in any other regard. That's the concern I have. So
No, we don't know that that's true. So I would think that you would want to get what you can have now and get it fixed at least where we can help our neighbors. Because if we continue in this light and not get this bill passed, we're right where we are. We can't do anything. We can't say anything for anybody.
Okay. Well, let me, uh, let's um bring in some other members into the discussion. I think Adrian had her hand up first. Adrian.
I'm trying to unmute. I'm sorry.
Okay, there, we, we have to.
Yeah, there's this balance to it, because the other side of this is there are comments that are so unnecessary that drag on and on that sometimes to muzzle is a good thing because people are not having conversations about what is at the task at hand. So when you come to a meeting and you're given of your time and it is just running left, part of this is why this had to occur, because so many of the different board meet, meetings were just running just ridiculously off the rails. So in many ways, we kind of did it to ourselves that they had to implement a rule to kind of say, and when you look at the different meetings on a level on different things, there's board members who are just running rapid with things that had nothing to do with or not being respectful of time and topic. So how do you get the balance? Because if you open the guardrails up and we go back to just these ongoing tirades of craziness, that's why people don't want to come and civically engage anymore, because that's what happens at many of these meetings all over the island.
Thank you. Uh, I think Jill was next. So Jill, go ahead, please.
Hi, so I agree partially with both Sylvia and Adrian, but what we're doing is being silenced from asking any questions to our public civic members, like all of the offices, like how do we get across to them what all of our neighbors have issues with, because we are the eyes and ears out there for all of our neighbors. So how do we get across the questions? And then did they tell you, Pat, what their reasoning is for this? Then take the detail as to why, because maybe we can address it with like a timeframe. Um, I'm sticking to questions and answers that way.
Well, uh, all like what Adrian suggested, um, all that is kind of a byproduct. All that OIP did is, is write up their interpretation of how the law, as it is written currently, applies to our meetings. And it's changed in the sense that no one followed it that way. But according to OIP, this is how it should have been, you know, and, and applied. So they came in, it was kind of a unique application. So, you know, say like the, the police department just starts deciding to enforce a law that hasn't been enforced before. And that's sort of where we're at. It, it's not new, it's not based upon, it's not based upon complaints that meetings are going off the rails or anything like that. He was just someone, uh, there were concerns brought up about public notice. And so they issued this opinion, and that's where it came from. And that's, that's why we're at where we're at. And uh, I, I will add that, I mean, we could kind of talk about the benefits and everything like that. What I would suggest is there is like a day to go and submit written testimony. I've actually been a little frustrated with the process, so I haven't even done that. I was kind of bad.
Yeah.
Um, but you can do that and uh, because we can't make any change here. There are a lot, there's a lot of frustration through the boards about this. So anyway, with that, I, I, I will go to Ray and then we'll come back to Sylvia.
Thank you. I just wanted to say something quick since I work for the state and we write testimony. Um, it says this act will take effect January first, twenty four ninety one. So I, my guess.
Okay, let me just quickly say, uh, apparently a lot of laws are written like that. And when they actually get to the stage that they're kind of passed, they, they change that. So yeah, I, I had that too. When I first saw legislation or potential bills, I was like, what the heck?
And that's the hit that he wants us to I think that's the hit that he wants us to write testimony. I think out of the thirty some odd boards, if some of us could just submit more testimony, because there was only like about four different entities, including OIP that submitted testimony. So if you are really concerned about this issue, let Senator know through the Judiciary Committee and write to, even if it's a one sentence, just register online and then type in the template, I oppose or I, you know, promote this measure. And that way, I think the Senator will feel a little bit more validated and help us out. You know, I, I'm just grateful that he responded in this way and he's waiting to hear from us. And I'm just sad that the other boards are not responding. And just to let you know, um, other boards that I've checked out their meetings, a lot of them don't follow the sunshine law. But it's good that we're trying to do our best to follow the law. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Yeah, a lot of boards do not. And, and that's how they get around it. And I think I wrote, you know, when I talked to um uh Civil B, that's why I said a lot of boards just ignore this and there are no real repercussions to ignoring it, quite honestly, maybe some, but and, and I think uh it's just best practice to try to follow the law. And that's what I, you know, talked to Senator Rhodes about that said, you know, if, if the state really wants people to follow it, it has to be practical and meaningful. And it's, I don't feel like it is under the current circumstance. So I do applaud him for doing something. So thank you. But let's not get away, you know, this is the best way to handle this is just go and submit testimony. But really quickly, I think Paula, Paula wanted to say something.
Yes, um, I want to say a lot, but I'm going to keep my mouth shut slowly. Um, number one, I want you to remember that as a neighborhood board person, we are also representing people that are in their sixty, seventies, eighties, nineties. And a lot of them don't have cell phones. A lot of them don't have computers. And they ask you because you, they know you're on the neighborhood board, they vote you in. And we can't even respond to them through the meetings to get the answers that they might want. And I think that's wrong. Number two, as a neighborhood security watch person and community policing, they, and I know you mentioned it earlier, we can't even ask questions in the meetings, because the police might know what we need, but none, you got to hang up the phone later on and say, oh, they could, didn't even have a chance to check it out. So sometime it might be an emergency and they're cutting us off at our old age. They don't want seniors involved, I think. And I'm saying that clearly because I know it's happening. Thank you.
So like I said, submit public testimony, Sylvia, and then why don't we wrap this up?
I just wanted to say that, you know, I agree and I understand what Adrian had said. But you know, some of the stuff about going off the track on these um meetings, it's really the responsibility of the chair to get you back in line again, you know, to get the meeting back on track on the subject. And um, and we really should try to enforce the three minute rule that we put in that, you know, each speaker had three minutes to give their presentation. And um, and that will also help to control the meetings. And, you know, but that's some of the little things that's in the plan. Um, and OIP will tell you that's absolutely legal to limit the time that of each presentation and each speakers, you know, for each speaker. So I think
Now, now we're actually getting a little off track. This is about the sunshine law, not administration of the meeting. So with that said, I mean, are there any last minute comments about this? Please, if you, we can't do anything about it as a board.
No.
Honestly, you have to go submit testimony. The led, it's in the legislature's hands at this moment. So even the commission has their hands tied. So please think about that. So with that said, um, while we move on, seeing no other discussion.
I was the beat.
Oh, I think so. Okay. So the next item on the agenda is a presentation by Larry Smith, and I see Larry online. And I guess Larry can introduce the topic. We can all see it, but Larry, if you want to go ahead, if you need to share the screen, just let our um neighbor assistant know and, and we will uh set that up for you.
Oh, I'm retired, so I don't have the ability to do fancy presentations. So I'll, I'll do verbal. So uh, this is a discussion of something that I have just become aware of is that there's a growing, a very fast growing problem um in our, in town, in town of uh vapes being sold that, that contain THC. And they can be sold in vape shops, in markets. There are nine vape, there are nine of these stores at the airport selling vapes that contain THC, which you would think would be illegal. And the number of these uh, like the number of places is growing rapidly. I think there's like a hundred different stores around the state right now that are selling these illegal vape products. The reason this is relevant, I was told that this has to be relevant to our neighborhood. The reason this is relevant to our neighborhood is the Kamakua Market on Lusitana Street. You guys are all familiar with it. Uh, it's been identified as selling uh vapes that have cannabis. I went down, it's a very nice store. Let's see, can you see? I don't know if you can see, this is about acquired these two products that clearly say they are uh cannabis. Uh, one of the products.
Excuse me, Larry, Larry. Um, yeah, your camera has gone off for us.
Oh.
So just so you know. And you know, you sent me a lot of information. Unfortunately, I'm not at my computer, so I don't have that I can share, but you know, if you have the graphics.
Do you come, do you come back on?
No, it didn't. You were on earlier before when you started.
It is on for some of us.
I see you.
You can see, I can see, I can see him.
Okay, we can't see it here, but okay, go ahead then, please.
So sorry about that. Anyway, so I was told this market is selling the, selling these products. Went down, uh, very helpful clerk, it's well organized. You walk right into market and you rock, walk right past the cash register and here's a nice display of all of these vapes, uh, most of which were selling are illegal because there's more cannabis in them than there should be. Uh, and I think this is very concerning because, uh, that market is right near the, uh, the Hanpa, my Y G school. And so there are a lot of young people that are walking down into that area and it's very easy for them to, to walk in that market. So and, and the issue is, you know, no IDs, uh, no permits are required. How this happened, and I went to, the reason I don't even know about this is there was a hearing at the legislature, uh, and the Department of Health Epidemiologist did a, did a presentation about this particular issue. What happened was in two thousand eighteen, there was a farm bill and somehow the farm bill split the cannabis plant into hemp and cannabis. And then the, the, the bill in its wisdom said, anything that is defined under the law as hemp, there are no rules whatsoever. So if it's hemp, you can, there are no rules. If anything can be sold anywhere, uh, no checking. So then what subsequently what happened is the, the vape manufacturers went to great lengths to develop a product that would officially, they would theoretically meet the definition of, of hemp. And that meant that they could then put that product pretty much anywhere they wanted to. Uh, one of the, uh, one of the issues now is some of the product that is being offered is, is illegal because it does contain levels of THC, uh, that, that make it, that make it, you know, you should, it should be required to only be sold at a, at a medical dispensary. But so this is, this is going on. And I guess what I would like to ask initially is can the city and are the police at least start policing these stores? There's a, there is a group that has gone out and identified over a hundred stores that are selling this, these illegal vapes. And can the police do something about it as a start? Because if not, we're going to have, just like fireworks and just like illegal pot, we're going to have yet another area where young people don't respect the law because they see the law being broken everywhere they turn around. And now they're going to see the law being broken because they can walk into a vape shop and, and buy these vapes. So can, can one, the police begin to or come back with an idea of how they're going to address this, and this is a new phenomenon. This many vape shops coming up, how, how are they going to address it? Is, is what I'm asking, especially get it out of our neighborhood. Because we know we've at least got this one market that is doing it. And it's doing it in an area where a lot of young people would congregate or will be around. Uh, so that's, that's what I'm asking. Uh, I know there's a, there's a bill that is going through the Senate that Senator Rose has, um, voted for that would basically shut down this whole illegal vape situation. Uh, we, we don't know if it's, it's going to go through the rest of the legislation, but there's a start. But I, I think, you know, I think at least can we have the city or the police begin to address this? And it would be, it would be one thing, it's nice if the, the nine, the nine sites in our airport that's run by the state would quit selling illegal vapes in the airport. Uh, so that's, that's what I'm just saying. Can we, can we get an answer from the police or from the governor, from the, um, the mayor's office about how they'll address this issue? I hope that makes sense.
Okay, uh, well, um, yeah, we can bring it up to our mayor's rep. I, I don't know if Director Hashiro, she's probably not on the line anymore, but, uh.
Yeah.
This is Lisa from Councilmember Dos Santos Tam's office.
You want to come?
I, I can, yeah, I can take, uh, this information back to council member. Um, and possibly I'll let him know, uh, Hashiro represents mayor on this neighborhood board. And, uh, maybe we can do something together.
That would be terrific. Now, uh, Larry, in preparation for this, you sent me a lot of, um, graphics and other information. Maybe that's something you could share with, uh, Lisa. You know, just outlining, I think you had some of the tests and things, the, the actual product tests.
Yeah.
But, okay, we can follow up that way. Are, are there any, uh, oh, sorry.
I'm thinking, uh, I can post my, um, email in the chat. And you can send me information or give me up, I'll also put my phone number there.
Yeah, Larry, you can reach out to me too, if you don't have that.
Okay.
Uh, are there any questions from our board members?
Yeah.
Are there any questions from anybody? Okay, Larry, thank you very much for your, um, thank you very much for coming out this evening and
Of course.
And giving that. Next up, we have, uh, Poly Highway Pedestrian Concerns. We keep this on the agenda if we've heard a little bit about the, the speeding issues with, um, Representative Takano Chi in, in District Five. Uh, are there any other, uh, concerns any of our board members or the public would like to bring up at this time regarding that issue that we haven't discussed? Seeing as none, uh, we can move on to our approval of the January twenty first minutes. Hopefully everybody has had an opportunity to review those. Does anyone wish to offer any amendments? I see a, oh, sorry, before we move on, I see a, um, I see people have raised their hands. So Mike Ellis, sir, if you'd like to go on. Mike Ellis.
There you go. I'm sorry. Uh, I was wondering what, what happened to some of the items that were on the, uh, agenda on board businesses like item C, New One Valley Park Operations and Security? Any updates on that?
That is not on our agenda.
Oh, so my agenda was sent out.
What, what board number do you have?
Number twelve.
Ask him what date he has it on.
Yeah, what is your date?
Uh, this was, uh, sent to me by email, uh, rather, uh, yeah, email.
Oh, the date on.
It's, it's tonight's, uh, meeting.
Uh, I don't have that on my agenda. That may have been last month. Um, yeah, I, does anyone else have that on their agenda? And I, I'm really, actually I, I have to say, I'm not aware of that, that issue.
Well, then could I just ask if there's any update on that?
I'm, I'm sorry, can you repeat the, the, the park in concern, please?
New One Valley Park. I'm the actor of that park.
I can't remember exactly what that was about, so, uh, there's no update that I'm aware of. I'm not sure what the issue was, to tell you the truth. If you reach out.
It's on our minutes. I believe that he's questioning the item on, on our minutes. It's on page three of three under board business and it's like in the middle of the page.
Uh huh. So Mr. Ellis, I think maybe you're looking at last month's minute or agenda.
It says New One Valley Park Operations and Security. Is that what Mr. Ellis is asking about?
Yes.
Yeah, I, that was la, that was our discussion from last month.
It, it was in our last meeting. It says, Member Korsigai expressed a concern regarding New One Valley Park may potentially get an encampment due to the security that was at Queen Emma has been let go.
Yeah, okay, I'm aware of all of that, but I just wanted to find out if there was an update. Could we get it back on the agenda again so we can have an update of that? Because there's a lot of activity here.
Okay, I'll put that on our agenda for next month.
Okay, appreciate it.
I wasn't aware of that, so I, I didn't know that was an issue. So, uh, yeah, sorry about that. But yeah, we'll put that on the agenda for next month.
There was an additional item that I was concerned about on, uh, item E on that minutes on Poly Highway Pedestrian Safety Concerns. I've made numerous attempts to have the police, uh, check into a residence at twenty nine sixty Poly Highway, which I think is an illegal bed and breakfast. But they park in the driveway and I know that with bed and breakfasts, there are requirements for parking. But the parking on the driveway extends out to the pedestrian sidewalk. And so we have a real problem there when you've got a handicapped person trying to stay on the sidewalk and with the sloping driveway finds himself riding his, his wheelchair on the highway. And that's not safe, but the police won't do anything about it, nor will the Department of Parks, not parks, but permitting department about it to check into this illegal, uh, bed and breakfast if it is illegal. I'm not too sure, but they don't meet some of the requirements. And it creates a safety concern to our elder people in the, in the neighborhood.
Okay, we're, we're going to give a response to what our board members.
Uh, hi, Mike, Audrey, Higano. I've been calling, uh, the police nine one one numerous times, maybe in the last couple of years, uh, about that situation. It's unsafe because the car, you're right, the car, it is a B and B, um, I mean, I, I can't prove it, but I'm assuming because the cars do, uh, crossover on the cross, uh, on the sidewalk and people can't walk. I've seen people walk on Poly Highway because the cars are protruding on the sidewalk. So I'm aware. So I guess would be helpful too, if you call nine one one and we kind of bug them and hopefully somebody will do something.
I'm a regular caller to nine one one on this issue.
Oh, okay.
It's happened.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, I'll let you guys take care of it.
No, we need your help.
Well, you don't have a lot of power to do anything.
Oh, you've got loads of power.
Um, well, I would say, oh, sorry, I didn't mean to talk over you. I would say, uh, Lisa Leonard from, um, Councilmember, uh, Dos Santos Tam's office is online, so, uh, maybe that's another issue you could look into, Lisa. Thank you.
Yeah, I've taken the information down.
Yeah, Mike, I would, um, if, if you could reach out to Lisa. And, you know, certainly like we've heard one of our board members has had that concern also. But if you could reach out to her at, uh, the council member's office and, and, you know, hopefully the city can take some action. Just have to see.
The, the main issue of course is, is that security for the park. They turn off the parking lot lights, they turn off the night lights, uh, through the park. And so it's quite dark and the only lights available are for the walking path to the bathroom that is not working.
Okay.
Lots of, thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt in this, in this.
Well, it's good you did because otherwise we would have missed it. And I guess that was a miscommunication about the, uh.
Okay.
I'm glad we could, uh, hopefully help.
Thank you.
Help resolve the issues, but at least get them in the proper people's hands. So Sylvia, did you?
I, I have, this is Lisa, I do, um, I've taken down the information for New One Valley Park and also for the twenty nine sixty Poly Highway.
Thank you very much. Um, thank you. Sylvia, did you want to add something?
Um, Patrick, okay. On page two of three of our minutes, um, under Papacola Community Updates that Adrian gave, the first bullet point is express gratitude towards Representative Jenna Takano Uchi for getting the walking trail behind the Chinese Bolton House to Pao Or. I think that needs to be clarified because the trail has always been there. I think Jenna helped to get it cleared so that it's possible again. Is that what happened?
Jenna helped the bridge over the ditch.
Help get it clear? So you want the, what do you want the minutes to reflect? So the minutes will reflect that, uh, the representative helped clear the bridge? Is that what happened?
Yeah, yeah, she got the, the, the stairs and, uh,
Stairs.
The, the bridge built over the.
Built.
Yes, the.
I'm sorry, the bridge built? Is that what they said?
Built.
Yes, yes, the bridge built.
Okay, bridge. Okay, so, uh, we will make, um.
They expand on that sentence to make it clear exactly what she did.
We just did.
Well.
Yeah, but it needs to be, um, uh, corrected in the minutes. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, uh, uh, what, what suggestion do you have? What amendment correction do you want to offer? Well, I think we, we've gotten, um, that the representative helped, uh, have, have the bridge built and and that's it, right? Is that, does that, I mean, Megan, I see on your head, is that?
And, uh, um, the other one that I have under here is residence and community concerns. Um, item six, CIP budget um, that Paula asked about, was that clarified tonight?
I, I, well, this is from last meeting. I mean, was it inappropriately written down from last meeting? So whether we, I don't remember if it was, if we discussed it or not, but this is just for.
Were you at last meeting, no?
So shouldn't that be on our agenda?
I wasn't aware of that, that it, it, yeah, I wasn't aware of that.
By the CIP budget as an item?
I wasn't aware of it. I'll put it on the agenda for next month.
I know, but it's, it's on our last meeting's, uh, minutes that these were, um, items. And I don't remember getting answers to those questions.
Oh, Sylvia, this is Rachel. Um, you said that was under community concerns? Cause I, I recall like, um, Paula like talking out loud saying, oh, can we get the state or city CIP? And then, um, Kim Hashiro, she did put in the chat saying, um, that the link, you know, with the city CIP. If that answers your question.
Oh, okay, I thought we were doing corrections for the minutes.
Yeah, we, we are, but that item wasn't listed on the agenda.
And it's in the minutes and it seems as though we missed the follow ups in, from our last meeting.
Yeah, but this is about correcting the minutes from the last meeting. Um, a follow up would not be in the, in the minutes from the last meeting. I mean, I'm not sure.
So from our last meeting, if there were things that were unfinished, we're not putting it back on the minutes for the following, the agenda for the following month?
Yeah, but that's the agenda. It's not these minutes.
So I, and it's, it's not on our agenda for this month. So we just missed it and I'm saying that these items that were missed for our agenda and we need to follow up. So it should be on our March's agenda.
Okay. If anybody.
Anyway, that's all I'm saying that.
Okay. Okay, so there are no corrections. You're talking about just follow ups. Just to let everyone know, if, if anybody wants to put anything on the agenda, I, I've, basically I've never refused anybody from the board. So please just let me know. I'll be happy to put it on there. Just gotta let me know. And I, I wasn't here the last meeting. I, I didn't realize I needed a follow up, so that's what happened. I'll put it in March.
That was my.
Are there? Yeah, uh, okay, no worries. Um, are there any other corrections or amendments from the minutes? So the only one I did hear that was a correction to the, uh, minutes was the, the one, uh, point about Representative Takano Chi. So with that correction, is there a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
Yes, so moved.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All, all those opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Any abstentions? Thank you very much. Okay, and like I said, if anybody wants anything on the agenda, yeah, there was just a little misunderstanding because. You know, I wasn't here last month, so I'd be happy to put anything on the agenda. I know especially now with the sunshine law, it. Makes it particularly important, so please don't hesitate. A week before the meeting to reach out. Don't do it in a few days. Thank you. So we can move on to our announcements. Um. The, the elections deadline you've heard a lot about is, was this Friday, I think. It's the twenty first at four o'clock, it's not at midnight. Um, I just checked this afternoon, we have a full slate from. Let's see, District One around Punch Bowl, there are no candidates. Um, District Two uh, is around, I guess, Booth, Booth uh. Booth Road and uh, Pacific Heights has five, five of five. But New One has, I think, three of three, three of five. So uh, we're, we're a little short of candidates if, if, but if you're on the board. Please think about running again, but you have to do it before uh. Friday or else you're going to have to wait to be appointed. So uh, please keep that in mind. I hope everybody's willing to serve again. So with that, are there any other announcements?
Patrick, how many people did we have?
I think only eight, five people in District Two, which is like the Pacific Heights uh, park area.
If we get any more people signing up for District Two, then it'll be a contested race. Okay?
Yes. Um, but we only have.
We have three in New One?
Yes. A lot well, when I checked this afternoon, as I recall. But anyway, it's just a point of please go sign up. If you, if you want to be a part of the board again. And I know it can be tedious sometimes, but it is a public service and uh, hopefully we, we try to do some good and. So please uh, serve, sign up to serve again. And if, just do it by Friday at four o'clock, but I, I do it early anyway. So with that said, are there any other questions or comments? Thank you. Uh, well, with all our business uh, conducted, I will adjourn the meeting as such. Thank, thank you, everybody for coming. And thank you for attending. If you have any questions, anything you want on the agenda, please let me know. And we'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Aloha.